Good evening and welcome to the West Covina City Council. Our regular meeting of Tuesday, March 5th, 2013. First, we will begin our meeting with our invocation led by Pastor Stephen I. Chiru of Faith Community Church and led by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Fred Sykes. Please rise.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight, and we thank you that you are the foundation of all wisdom and goodness. And we pray that tonight, as this council convenes to discuss different matters, Father, that you would provide your wisdom to us. And Lord, that you would give us just understanding and good guidance, Lord, as we are here tonight to just discuss different matters here. We thank you, Lord, that you are guiding and giving just your insight to our local government. And we pray, Father, for your blessing upon this city council meeting here tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to the flag of our nation. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll have roll call. And before we do the roll call, I have a brief response to read from Councilmember or Mayor Pro Tem Herford. Says after 33 years of working for Southern California Edison, I had retired at the end of February, and I will be traveling for the next few weeks and will not be in attendance at the March 5th meeting. With that, Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Sanderson, here. Mayor Pro Tem Herford. Councilmember McIntyre.
Here.
Councilmember Satello.
Here.
Councilmember Sykes.
Here. Madam Mayor, with that, I think it would be appropriate if there'd be a motion to excuse Councilwoman Mayor Pro Tem Herford for tonight's meeting.
Also move. Motion to excuse Councilmember Herford from this evening's meeting.
I'll make a second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. City Attorney keeping us in line. We appreciate that. Thank you so much. With that, we have any reporting out from closed session? Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Members of the city council, the record should reflect that the city council convened this evening at the special meeting for one item under conference of legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 654956.9, Subdivision D1. That was the city of West Covina versus Jaeger Schanska Incorporated and Hager Golf LLC et al. Record should further reflect that the council members McIntyre, Satello, and Sykes were all present, that those three council members convened the meeting and received a presentation from special counsel on this one matter of litigation, that authority was provided to special counsel to attempt to effectuate settlement consistent with the terms expressed in closed session. That was 3-0. That concludes my report from closed session. Madam Mayor, it's appropriate to continue with the open portion of the meeting.
Thank you so much, Mr. City Manager. And I was not at that meeting due to the fact we had golf and science fairs and all types of things. I did make it, but I was just a shy late. It was a quick meeting, so I apologize for that. As well as, next item on our agenda is, any changes to the agenda, Mr. City Manager?
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, I do not have any changes to the agenda here tonight, but I would like to introduce to you our new interim fire chief, Rick Genovese. If you can come down here real quick. And I don't know if you'd like to say a few words?
I'd just like to say it's an honor to be back, and I'm enjoying it, and I look forward to working with all of you and the community, and thank you for this opportunity.
Well, welcome, and we really appreciate you. And, you know, I know, I've known you for years. Fantastic. So, welcome and thank you so much from the council and citizens, and very nice to see you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. This time, we have no presentations, so we will jump down to our oral communications section of our meeting. That is where we have a five-minute speaking limit. We have our yellow speaker cards at the top of the stairs if you'd like to talk on any agenda or non-agenda items. We will address briefly any non-agendized items if we possibly can, but according to some specific rules from Roberts Rules and our Brown Act, we will not be able to go into full depth because it's not agendized for the meeting. So I just wanted to remind the community that we will do our very, very best. And again, I would always encourage residents to call City Hall if they would like to meet with any of us. I'd be more than glad to meet with you on any issues that you have in the community. The city manager's number is 626-939-8401. So I welcome your call and would be more than glad to meet with you on any items that you would like to discuss. And with that, I'd like to call our first speaker forward, which is Ms. Irene Fleck.
Thank you, and good evening. First, I want to again thank the city for their partnering with the San Gabel Valley Lit Fest, the County Library of West Covina, and the Friends of West Covina Library. The function on the 15th through the 17th of February was a great success, and we have a meeting tomorrow with City Hall about plans for the future. There's a couple of things with the library that I want to call your attention to is the Zumba classes were so successful, we're going to have them every Wednesday night at 6:30. We're now adding, as of March 30th, Saturday at 2:00, a yoga class. So in addition to keeping your brain healthy, we're going to keep the bodies healthy, too. And one of the special programs that we're having is Love on Four Paws, and this is therapy, a therapy dog. And Chip will be there at the library to meet you at 2:00 on March 9th. Do come, do come. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that information. Our next speaker is Deana Sykes.
Good evening, Mayor and council, as well as everybody in the rest of the room. I'm the president of Friends of Rowland Unified Schools Foundation, which is known as For Us. We are a nonprofit 501(c)(3) all-volunteer foundation that brings technology and the arts into the Rowland schools. As we all know, my technology expert's in college right now, so our kids know so much more about technology than we do. And every day, it's different. What's great about the foundation is we have our 10th Avenue, 10th (laugh), 10th Annual Casino Night. Casino Night brings funds into the, for classroom grants. So far, to date, we've raised over $300,000 for Rowland schools. That puts iPads. iPads are a wonderful tool to help kids, especially with special needs. You know, when autism is such a broad spectrum, some kids don't need that much help, but sometimes you need something special to reach those kids. An iPad is a wonderful tool for that. So is an EyeTouch. Well, these things aren't exactly cheap, so for a teacher to bring them into a classroom, it would take a serious hit on their pay. With the foundation and the money we raised at our Casino Night, we're able to bring those tools to the classroom to help the teachers. And nowadays, with budget cuts, schools, districts can't afford field trips. Well, we can help the teachers with that, because, again, it's not a necessary evil, but you know what? I remember a lot of my field trips growing up that taught me a lot. And sometimes, you gotta put a little joy into that kid's life for them to enjoy school. They don't realize, they're having so much fun, they don't realize they're learning. Also, another area where Rowland is very proud of is our music program. We have a mariachi program. We also have a strings program, as well as an orchestra. These are valuable tools because music is shown to improve a child's IQ. And not only that, too, it shows, teaches kids how to plan and to practice and to see the results. So those are just a few items that we do with the Rowland Foundation. We just happen to have some invitations right here. They're $40 for tickets, or 45 at the door, and if you can't come, a $40 donation, of course, is greatly appreciated. Our grand prize this year is four car hopper tickets to Disneyland. So if you win and you only spend 40 bucks, better than taking out a loan to go to Disneyland. So it's, and if you don't come, you will still be entered in the raffle. So it's a great way to help the schools, help the kids, and more importantly, a kid that doesn't drop out of school is one less burden on our society. Schools and education are where we need to focus and help our kids. Thank you again.
Thank you very much, and thank you for that information. That's wonderful. Our next speaker is Mr. Forrest Wilkins.
Greetings to all city council members of West Covina. Recognizing that Mr. Hefford is not, Herford is not here tonight, I will still make a few remarks, and if he views the video podcasts and so forth, maybe he could answer these questions when he does return. When most people run for elected office, there is a reference in their political ads as to their leadership abilities. Councilman Satello, Councilman McIntyre, and Mayor Sanderson. You failed to demonstrate any leadership on February the 5th of this year. Councilman Herford, you displayed the typical diversion tactic that a lot of politicians do when confronted with an issue that you could not reasonably argue, i.e., when Councilman Sykes pointed out the fact that Mr. McIntyre is a local developer and would have to recuse himself on many matters of city business because of a conflict of interest. And what did Councilman Herford do? But ask a unacceptable, demeaning question of Councilman Sykes. Councilman Herford's question had nothing to do with the issue of why Andy McIntyre was qualified to fill a vacant council seat. Mayor Sanderson, after the five-minute recess that you called, why didn't you demonstrate leadership and say, "Councilman Herford's question did not reflect my views"? But no, dead silence. Councilman Satello, you had the golden opportunity to prove some independent thinking and reflect on Councilman Herford's unacceptable question for our city, but no, dead silence. Now, Councilman, Mr. McIntyre, you also missed an opportunity to show your independence. You could have said, "Councilman Herford's question was not one I would ask." Here it is, 28 days later, and no apology to Councilman Sykes or to the citizens of West Covina. Councilman Herford's question of February the 5th, asked to Councilman Sykes in reference to Andy McIntyre's qualification to fill a vacant council seat, was uncalled for and reflects badly on four city council members and is unacceptable to the citizens of West Covina. Some in the community have already suggested that the council should send Councilman Herford to sensitivity training. Councilman Herford, your question was very offensive, and you should apologize to the citizens of West Covina and to Councilman Sykes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Julie Shepherd.
My remark is also towards Councilman Herford. My husband and I moved to West Covina in 1954, so we've been through quite a few city councilman people, good, bad, indifferent, whatever. But I must say that when Councilman Herford made that comment on February 5th to Mr. Sykes, it was disgusting, it was racist, bigoted, and completely inappropriate. I think he owes Councilman Sykes an apology. He owes an apology to the citizens of West Covina, and if he can't man up to that, he needs to resign. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Lisa Mayo.
Madam Mayor, councilpeople, members of the community, my name is Lisa Mayo, and I have wanted to introduce myself, as I have submitted an application for commissioner for the senior community. I've obviously have been in this community for over 30 years and have volunteered in many organizations within. Plus, I'm also the founder of They Will Know, which is a nonprofit organization that deals in teaching teens about domestic violence, which is one of my passions. Anyway, that was basically it, out of light of everything else. And anyway, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much for introducing yourself and welcome to the meeting. Our next speaker is Ms. Shirley Buchanan.
Good evening, Mayor Sanderson, members of the council, city staff, and members of the audience. At the February 5th council meeting, when Councilman Herford made the racist remark to Councilman Sykes, the people in the audience and probably the viewers at home gasp in disbelief that Herford would say what he did. At that point, the mayor seemed to lose control of the meeting and called for a recess. At the February 19th council meeting, I made a presentation that this council should censure Councilman Herford for the racist statement he made to Councilman Sykes. It is my opinion that Councilman Sykes' comment was not an accidental slip. His intention was to belittle Councilman Sykes and hopefully get a heated response. It must have been a letdown to him when he didn't get the response he'd hoped for. My last statement just before I left the podium on the 19th was that I asked the council to censure Councilman Herford for his racist comment to a fellow councilman at the next council meeting, and that they, as the governing body for the city of West Covina, request he attend a sensitivity class or apologize to Councilman Sykes at the March 5th council meeting. As you can see by the current agenda and his absence, nothing has been agendized. Mayor Sanderson's lack of response on the 19th gave me a clue that the council of four would, one, sweep the negative behavior of Councilman Herford under the carpet, ignore the residents' complaints that this behavior from a councilperson will not be tolerated, and if the council does not address the consequences of such conduct, it telegraphs to other communities that the West Covina's governing body condones racist and negative behavior between councilmembers. Please do the honorable thing. Censor Councilman Herford or have him apologize to Councilman Sykes for the racist comment at the next council meeting. I would like to add something, and it wasn't brought to my attention until just recently, that when I was making my presentation on the 19th and similar to what was happening tonight, is that the mayor doesn't look at you when you're talking, and we'd appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just briefly, I write everything down you guys say, so if I'm not exactly looking at you right now, because that way I can go back and address any concerns that you may have. I want to just let everybody know that that's how I have always, I've been a secretary, so I think it's just habit. I try and make eye contact during the conversation the best I can, so thank you for that. Our next speaker is Mr. Corey Warshaw.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, I wanted to speak on item 13, request from councilmember Andrew McIntyre to request city to prepare a report on creation of a program to provide incentives and educate landlords on the importance of maintenance of their property. Good idea, but I think it's already there, and we shouldn't be wasting staff's time with that, since staff's time is very limited with the minimal amount of staff that the city currently has. And the reason why I say that is the police department, thanks to our chief, has what we call crime-free housing. Crime-free housing allows apartment owners, apartment managers to attend a, actually, an eight-hour class that helps them not only talk about their property, which an inspection is done afterward, at a very low cost to the city, because the chief has the seniors helping our police volunteers do that portion of it. So we look at the property and tell them things that need to be cleaned up, cleared, make sure that it's safe for not only children, but for keeping crime to a minimum in the area, making sure they aren't keeping old cars around, making sure they all have peep holes so they can look out their door without opening it, make sure shrubbery is kept below window level so that they can see out, and it's not a hiding place for people who want to commit a crime to get that opportunity. They also, if they pass the inspection and go to the classes, they are allowed to call our police department on potential tenants to find out if there's problems with those tenants. So it helps them in ways. They also get to put up in their, on their apartment complex that it is a crime-free location as far as being a member of the crime-free. So again, I don't think that we need to be creating more work or start something new that's already been done by the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. That concludes our oral communications. I would briefly like to just address a couple things that were said, unless any other council member would like to speak. I just wanted to, in reference to the city attorney, maybe in the couple times a couple residents have brought forward some issues with the censure, and I know there's First Amendment rights, et cetera, so maybe I can meet with you, Mr. City Attorney, and then we can discuss what actions can be taken and, you know, bring that, whatever is necessary at that time, because I'm not really sure, you know? I don't want to step on anybody's toes in any way, shape, or form. I want to do my job and represent the community. Is that kind of the right direction, Mr. City Attorney?
I will meet with you, Madam Mayor, to discuss those issues.
Absolutely. Okay, fantastic. Thank you so much. And with that, we can move forward to, oh, Councilmember Sykes, yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, in these last past few weeks, I have never felt so much apart of this city as I have in these last past few weeks. For you folks to step forward and realize that my intentions that night was strictly to best represent you and nothing else. So those of you who have come forward and spoke out, and those of you who have contacted me on the phone and so forth, I thank you. I thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Our next item is our consent calendar. If there's no items that need to be pulled by any council, a motion is in order to approve our consent calendar.
I think a motion to approve consent.
A motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor to approve the consent calendar?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 4 to 0. We will go down to our public hearings, item number 10. Just give me a moment while I find that documentation. This is our public hearing. This matter is set for public hearing. Is the development of the draft for the fiscal year 2013-2014's Community Development Block Grant Action Plan. Well, City Clerk, please verify that proper legal notice has been given. Yes, that's verifying. Thank you so much. And at this time, I shall open the public hearing on the development of the draft of the fiscal year 2013-2014 CDBG action plan. First, we'll have the presentation of our staff report, and then we shall hear from comments from the public. Mr. Chung, who will present that staff report?
Yes, Mr. Kelly McDonald will present that report tonight.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. This matter concerns the authorization to draft a fiscal year 2013-2014 CDBG action plan. As a condition of receiving federal CDBG funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, the city is required to prepare an annual action plan which details the intended use of the grant funds. Prior to drafting an action plan, the city is required to hold a hearing to provide the public an opportunity to comment on the needs and priorities on which the plan will be based. In April 2010, the city council approved the 2010-2015 Consolidated Plan. This is a five-year strategic visioning document which serves as the basis for subsequent action plans. Development of this plan required the consideration and prioritization of nine categories of community need, which HUD identifies. These categories are described in attachment number one. In 2012, after two years of double-digit percent reductions in grant funding, the city amended the plan's priorities to better represent its capacity. The resulting prioritization is shown in table one. The grant amounts for 2013-2014 have not been announced to this point, however, to complete the action plan by the required due date, HUD has advised the city to move forward with its process, rolling over a continuation of current priorities, then, if needed, amending the plan at a later time once the grant allocations are known. Based on the outcome of this hearing, the staff will prepare and publish the draft action plan. It'll be available for a 30-day required public review and comment period. Draft will then be presented to the city council for final approval in a public hearing on April 16th. There's no fiscal impact resulting from this report, therefore, it's recommended that the city council direct staff to develop a draft fiscal year 2013-2014 CDBG action plan based on the needs and priorities identified in table one of this report. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much. And at this time, is there any questions of staff by city council members? Seeing no one raising their hand, that would mean no. So we have no questions? And if there's anyone present on this item? If there is not, then I shall close the public comment portion of the hearing and ask for any council discussion, if there is any, which everyone looks quiet. I think you've done a fantastic job, obviously. Thank you so much for this. And at this time, a motion is ordered to authorize the staff to draft the fiscal year 2013-2014 CBG action plan.
Second.
Madam Mayor, a second.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 4 to 0. Our next item on the agenda is our finance department. Item number 11, which is our exception to the 180-day wait period to hire interim finance director. Mr. Chung, do we have a staff report on that, or are you looking just for a motion?
It's up to the purview of the council.
Council? Council's pleasure.
A move to approve?
Okay, so we have an approve. Any other discussion, or do I hear a second?
Aye, second.
Okay, a motion and a second for the resolution. Madam City Clerk?
Resolution 2013-14, a resolution of the city council of the city of West Covina, California, authorizing an exception to the 180-day waiting period for the employment of a retiree.
Do I have a motion and a second? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And at this time, we will recess our city council meeting at 7:31. To our successor agency, the Yellow Agenda. Roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Chairman Sanderson, here. Vice Chairman Herford. Board Member McIntyre.
Here.
Board Member Satello.
Here.
Board Member Sykes.
Here.
Any changes to the agenda, Mr. City Manager?
No changes to the agenda.
No changes. We have our consent, and I'm looking for a motion unless there's any discussion on our minutes and treasurer's reports.
Make a motion to accept the consent calendar.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor?
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 4 to 0. And at this time, I am looking for a motion for adjournment.
A motion to adjourn? Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor for adjournment?
Aye.
We are adjourned at 7:32. Our next item on the agenda is under Mayor Councilmember Reports. This is an item that I requested, item number 12, and I really greatly appreciate the chief of police and all you are doing currently and are looking forward to, I don't know if everybody's had an opportunity, maybe if I could, Mr. Chung, have a brief staff report just to let the community know, it's in reference to the Citywide School Violence Training and Intervention Program. Would we be able to... Would we be able to get a brief report on that?
Absol-, excuse me, absolutely. I'll have SWAT Commander Lieutenant Pat Ben Shop come and present a brief presentation.
Thank you.
And by the way, I just want to point out that the reason why this was able to come so quickly was that the Police Department was already proactive and working with the school districts on this and so they are reporting exactly what they already are in the works.
Can I say great minds think alike or am I not?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much for everything you do.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, Mr. Chung and city staff. I am Lieutenant Ben Shop and I will be presenting the staff report on the Citywide School Violence Intervention Program. On January 14th of this year, the nation was shocked by the violent events that occurred at Sandy Hook Elementary School. In that violent event, an intruder came onto campus and killed and or critically injured small school-aged children and a school staff. This not only took the police and community by surprise, but it made us reevaluate the way we look at the safety and security that we currently provide for our schoolchildren, our most precious resource. Shortly after this event, Mayor Sanderson and the City Council expressed their support in the efforts to protect the children of West Covina as they attended school. The mayor directed the Police Department to prayer report on Citywide School Violence Training and we did just that. We knew as a police department that the standard training that was currently available was not enough. We had to think out of the box and we had to come up with a better program and I think we've accomplished that. This training would enhance our officers' training in responding to school violence, preventing school violence, and mitigating school violence. It would also cooperatively educate school officials on their new role in responding to violent events. We came up with a three-pronged approach to accomplish this in the program. The first was police training and campus threat assessments. The police are trained to respond to violent emergencies, but this, Sandy Hook, and other recent events, was a clear indication that we had to do more. In such, we have selected members of our SWAT team, the best of the best, to attend the best of the best training that the nation had to offer in school violence prevention and mitigation. We've begun that training. With this training, the officers will be sent to each campus in the City of West Covina and perform a threat assessment. This assessment would be very detailed and would assess security measures currently in place, lockdown protocols, and what we're currently doing as school staff to recognize and report issues on campus in a timely manner. The second prong would be training our school staff. This is where the program gets very unique for West Covina. What is currently available is principals, superintendents, teachers, school staff may attend a generalized cookie-cutter approach, if you will, to preventing school violence. What the West Covina Police Department will do, will visit each campus, each teacher in their classroom, the principal in her office, the janitor in his office, the yard lady out in the recess yard, and train them in their environment on how to respond to a violent event. This is much more time-consuming than the standard training that's currently available but is far more effective in preventing this type of event in the City of West Covina. The third prong is a reality-based scenario training. This is very unique as well. We will be bringing our police officers together with our school staff and teachers and training together on a campus to successfully work together in resolving a make-believe violent event. This will provide an opportunity to work together, which to this point is done rarely, and will also let each know our limitations and our expectations of the other. The fiscal impact of this program is good. We are able to fund this program within the existing Police Department budget and may utilize grant funds from Homeland Security to accomplish this as well. Madam Mayor, you and the City Council have put West Covina on the cutting edge of school safety by implementing this program. It'll be the envy of not only San Gabriel Valley but perhaps the nation. Our officers involved in this program are already receiving calls from superintendents and principals from as far away as LA City Schools. It's very popular and we thank you for your support of the Police Department and the measures you've taken to protect our children in West Covina. This concludes my report. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you so much. Any questions or comments?
I'd just like to thank you guys so much for getting this off so quick and really acting on this thing in such a, you really need to hit it right now. I mean, the scariest thought, you know, my daughter teaches at schools, my kids don't go to school and they're all older. What I'm saying is for our community to be safe, I really appreciate the time the Police Department has done for this. Thank you.
It's our pleasure, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, thank you so much for being the best Police Department in the valley. You guys are fantastic and West Covina is a great community because of you. So we're, I'm glad that we're able to, you know, do something like this for our community and I'm hoping that, you know, people do hear and appreciate what you guys do on a daily basis as well. So thank you so much and thank you for the report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And at this time, a motion is in order to formally approve and support the proactive efforts of our Police Department in addressing the school violence hereby increasing the safety and security of our children in the West Covina schools.
I move.
I have a motion by Mr. McIntyre.
A second.
And a second. Councilmember Sykes.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. That's very impressive whereby our police have taken a huge step that we need in the portion of our public safety that involves school safety. I will support this item tonight because it is better than doing nothing. But I do want to put on the record that I feel that as a City Council, we are falling short of where we need to go with our public safety. We definitely need to put together a comprehensive study whereby we look at the types of crimes, the number of police officers that we need to handle this type of situations that we get from the study, and also the finances. At least those three things need to be thoroughly looked at and reviewed so that we can be more comprehensive than just stepping forward to take care of our school situation. We need to do a citywide approach and preparation for our public safety and it's the same thing. We should also be looking at our fire, which is a part of our public safety. And the bottom line is, we know that crime can kill and we know that fire can kill as well as destroy our property and so forth. So I really think that we should be looking more comprehensive, but since I can't get us to move beyond where we are, then you have my vote tonight to support the, what they've done for the school safety program. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. And with that, we have a motion and a second. And I agree that it's always good to continue to work hard and work with police and fire to make sure that we're doing everything we can and I know that our Police Department and Fire Department are top-notch and I'm very proud of them and I would be honored to hear any other ideas if you'd like to bring stuff forward to look at those as well, Ms. Councilmember Sykes, to see what more we can do, you know, just trying to throw out ideas and so would love to hear those from you as well. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Fantastic. Thank you so much, everyone, for your support. It really means a lot. I have young children and, you know, you just think about families and protecting them and so that really means a lot. That's a good step in the right direction and thank you again to our Police Department for everything they do. At that, this time, we now drop down to your City Council requests for reports and studies or investigations. We all call it our Mother May I section and we have a request from Councilmember Andrew McIntyre on item number 13. And where this kind of derived from, I know a resident spoke in reference to this, is that Councilmember Sykes had brought a report similar to address and deal with some of the problems we're having with our apartments. And I think this was kind of a hybrid draw towards that and I think it's a, I think we're moving and heading in the right direction. So with that, I will hand it over to Councilmember McIntyre to discuss his ideas and thoughts and we can go from there.
Yeah, it basically derived from Councilman Sykes' concerns about our properties around town as far as possibly looking at doing a property inspection to make sure that codes are being met, that there's not crime occurring and that the proper businesses are operating and so forth. And at that time, I made mention that I thought we'd already had some serious constraints on our staff and there, we only have one code enforcement person at the moment right now. So to dump 15,000, 13,000-plus inspections on an individual was, I just, I didn't, in my opinion, feel it was feasible. And I appreciate Councilman Sykes' concerns for our property. Property tax is our largest source of revenue for the city. So I think taking Councilmember Sykes' concerns plus my input on how we might be able to address this got to the point where we at least bring, because sometimes people forget, I think, that, you know, the maintenance of their properties, it's not just, it's not just, it doesn't just affect them, it affects, it affects the energy level of the community, wherever it is. Their neighbors don't want to necessarily fix up their properties, which then causes a broken window effect. And so sometimes I think we just need to remind people the importance of the upkeep of their properties and the effects that it has on the community, not just from an eyesore standpoint but also from a revenue standpoint, and at least try to brainstorm some ideas with staff on maybe just a reminder of the importance of keeping their properties up and how it's better for everybody. So I'm open to further discussion on this, but that's basically where I'd like to go and just sit down and just get involved with other landlords in town. I've heard concerns from citizens and property owners about different parts of the city. So that's where this came from and I would just like to move forward with possibly putting together something to inform people.
Councilmember Sykes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember McIntyre, for at least not letting it totally die away. And my concern is that for most of the taxpayers in West Covina, our most important thing that we own is our home. And when we moved here, most of us, especially those who've lived here for over 30 years, we were very excited and very confident in the standard of the city and the quality of life that was offered. And now we fast forward to 2013, our ability to keep those standards up has fallen away in that we are, as mentioned earlier, we're down to one code enforcement officer. So that was my focus and to try to brainstorm and figure out how we can fund and strengthen our code enforcement unit itself. And if possible, I wanted to add some strength to our codes in that when we had businesses that after we went through a procedure and a protocol of asking them to comply and they fail, I wanted some strength to be there as, as Mr. McIntyre talked about incentive. So we know that there can be positive and negative consequences and the same thing could be as far as what we have on the books. To encourage folks, that's fine, but there also, there also should be some consequences that should be sanctioned and suffered when they fail to comply. Because when we, I mean, I've had my neighbors come by and it wasn't just rental property that they talked about, they also talked about business properties. I mean, they stopped in front of my house and said, "Hey Fred, what is going on at this corner over here? It's, looks like blight and it's a very busy corner in the city." So I was hoping to not only just address the apartments and so forth but also our businesses and I'm hoping that we can come up with something to try to help fund and get our code enforcement back so we can get out and get busy on keeping the standards up through our code enforcement. And with that, I'll give it over to the rest of my council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none at this time, I would agree with the direction that we're going. I think that we could brainstorm and come up with some ideas on how we can be more effective on, with limited resources, obviously with state and the budget issues that everyone's facing, that's been a challenge and West Covina is working hard to make sure that, you know, we're doing that. One of the things that I know when I've got residents' calls or I drive by something, I remember seeing a business that had an old sign that was all rotted out and I get on my speed dial and poor Shannon Yahtzee over there gets phone calls from me, "When are they fixing that sign?" And he is amazing, trees or any kind of blight. So I encourage residents to call us and then we'll bug him and then it all gets taken, you know, quite a bit. He's amazing. So I know that's part of what we do as council and I understand totally where you're coming from when people, you know, stop you at the store and say, "Hey, can you find out about this or that or the other?" So I would, if Andy would be okay with, I'll make a motion to approve having this come back because at this time, this is a Mother May I item where he has to get approval to come back with more ideas and thoughts and then we can brainstorm at that time if it's acceptable with the, with you to, or I could second your motion if you'd like.
Ladies first.
Ah, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries four to zero. And we are very clear, so our City Clerk can hear.
All right, going on the same motion, if I can please have for, on a Mother May I, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to get the department heads, Chris, all of us council, and I'd like to get on a bus. And if Fred has four or five places we'd like to see or Andy has four or five places or you, or Steve, whatever, we go out together and we see together whatever, what other people are seeing. Or if we have people in the audience that are giving this, the city some blight that they want the city to see, we go out there with the department heads and with the council and we address this and we look at it. And I think we should, you know, I'd like to see if staff could have us something for, we actually see what they're seeing and we could all be together, we could discuss it together as a body and as a city. And I'd like to see if we can get something like that intact.
Is that, is that part of this report or is that something?
That's something separate.
It's under, under City Council comments or requests.
Understood. Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah. Is that correct?
Right, it's correct.
Councilmember Sotelo, okay. Any other comments from council? Councilmember Sykes?
I would just like to say that that's, I think that's a fantastic idea because not all of us see the entire city and this perhaps would give us a chance as a collective, as a group, to look and see what we're dealing with up close and personal. So I think it's a great idea. Thank you, Mr. Sotelo.
Great. With that, any other council member comments? We are at the end of our meeting this evening. Everyone's quiet. So with that, we drop down to the adjournment unless, City Manager, you have any comments? Look like, all right. Thank you, everyone, for coming this evening and again, you can call Chris, oh, you can call me or, I do give your number out, 626-939.
Please happen to give me a call.
Yeah, absolutely. We're here for you and we want to try and do the very best that we can. And with that, I do have one adjournment. Tonight, I'd like to adjourn our meeting in memory of Kim Eo Hatake Amma, who passed away at the age of 92. He was a principal founder of our East San Gabriel Valley Japanese Community Center. He lived here and he was in here in West Covina at the end of World War II and had remained active for many, many years. Our thoughts and prayers are with his family and all the members of the East San Gabriel Valley Japanese Community Center. And with that, if there's no other adjournments, there's a motion in order to adjourn. And with that, if there's no other adjournments, there's a motion in order to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn.
A motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? We're adjourned.